Good morning, members. It is the appointed time and there is a quorum. Welcome to the meeting of the Public Accounts Committee on Reports Number Eighty-Two, Chapter Two of the Director of Audits on Emergency Dental Services and Elderly Dental Care Supports. This is the second public hearing. Today, the witnesses we have are Professor Lo Shoumao, Secretary for Health, and Dr. Ronald Lamb, Director of Health and the teams. Today's hearing will begin from Part Three. The member in charge is Mr. Edmund Wong. So as before, Mr. Edmund Wong will take the lead and then other members will ask questions. Ms. Carmen Khan? Thank you, Chairman. Now, I'm aware that concerning Monafon Dental Clinic in Saikong, there is a new queuing arrangement. The media and the public has raised concerns over the queuing arrangements for this. So can I seek a reply from the director? Any objection, Mr. Wong? No. Ms. Carmen Khan, please. Thank you. Last time, Professor Lo mentioned in his opening remarks that the dis-distribution arrangement at Monafon Dental Clinic was suggested yesterday on the ninth. Patients can start queuing at twelve A.M. At the same time, preliminary registration would begin. After that, at eleven A.M. the next morning, patients can come back to get the disc, but they would only get the dental appointment at one P.M. Now, starting from the ninth of May, patients can start queuing at eight P.M. the previous night for preliminary registration. And instead of coming back at eleven A.M. the next day, since the dental appointment is at one P.M., patients only have to come back at one thirty, sorry. Patients will have to be come back on one P.M. Half an hour before the appointment. So I would like to understand the design behind this arrangement. But the first time I heard it was that patients had to come back three times. But it seems that now patients still have to make two back-and-forth trips. So I think the public would like to understand why that patients have to get a preliminary registration and then come back to get the disc again. Secretary?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Khan. First of all, we must stress that with shortage of supply, this distribution is not the most ideal arrangement. The ultimate goal should be enhancing supply of dental services to reduce the waiting time. However, with the scarcity of resource, this distribution is an important part of our arrangement. We required patients to get the disc one day, the day before their appointment. Save the appointment is one thirty P.M., a lot of elderly patients would start queuing in advance, way ahead of the appointment. So as long as there is a queue, this distribution is necessary, that's the fact. A lot of elderly patients would queue way before the distribution of disc, even overnight. So we thought, since the elderly patients are there so early, why don't we just give them the preliminary registration disc first so that they can go back to sleep and get the formal disc the next day? Then they can have a good night's sleep. So the principle is we are still distributing the disc in the same day. So that's why we are distributing the disc starting at twelve A.M. I'm not saying this is the ideal arrangement, but that's for the benefits of the elderly patients. They started queuing very early or very late in the night, depending on your definition. So that's why we gave them the preliminary disc at twelve A.M. Now, with the improvement or enhancements in dentist's supply and also with the electronic registration platform, elderly people would not have to queue in person. But before that come about, we want to improve the queuing arrangements a bit for the dental clinics. So we are now starting the preliminary registration at twelve A.M. And then the patients can register formally at one P.M. the next day, and then they can see the dentist at one thirty A.M. So like Ms. Carmen Khan said, the new arrangement was implemented on the ninth of May for the Monafon Dental Clinic in Saikong. So instead of issuing the disc at eleven A.M., it would only start registration at one P.M. So that the patients don't have to wait for two hours. The second step is, in early July, we're going to adjust the arrangement again. So instead of twelve A.M., we will start the preliminary registration at eight P.M. the night before. The third step is to commission the online disc allocation system so that patients no longer have to get the preliminary disc at eight P.M. the night before. Chairman?
I have a follow-up question. So before the improvement, for all the dental clinics, patients only have to make two trips. However, for Saikong, for the Monafon Dental Clinic, besides queuing the night before, patients have to come back to get the disc at one P.M. and then come back again at one thirty P.M. for the actual appointment. So there is an extra trip compared with other patients. So why aren't you saving the patients the eleven A.M. trip? By requiring them to come back at eleven A.M., extra manpower would be required. So who decided the arrangement should be so? I don't see how it is beneficial to anyone. An extra manpower is needed. So what was the background behind this decision? So may I invite the director or the dentist to answer this question? Now, eleven A.M. formal registration and one thirty P.M. formal appointment. Concerning the background behind the arrangements, may I invite Dr. Ronald Lamb to answer this question? Thank you, Chairman. About the arrangement, at the time, a Monafon Dental Clinic was not, was still operating. Now, because of shortage of manpower, for Monafon Dental Clinic, there is only general public sessions left. The manpower is redeployed from the Saikong Dental Clinic. Now, back then, when there was still sufficient manpower, the clinic would see civil servants cases. So one thirty would be the peak. Now, the assistants and staffers, as well as clerks in the clerk, would be very busy, starting from the morning. Now, at eleven, starting at eleven A.M., the peak would be, would be, would not be the peak. So when business was not so busy, the staffers would start registering the patients of the day. So that's why they decided to start registering patients at eleven A.M. after the peak of civil servants' patients. However, the G.P. sessions would only begin after one thirty P.M. And it's not convenient for the elderly patients to wait until one P.M. in the clinic. So since Monafon Dental Clinic is no longer taking civil servants' patients, we are changing the arrangements to start the registration at one P.M. So after getting a disc, patients only have to wait half an hour to see the dentist. So before one thirty P.M., dentists or dental officers working at the Chongguan Road Dental Clinic would go to the Monafon Dental Clinic to serve the patients. And for the Chongguan Road Dental Clinic, that's the clinic for the civil servants. So with your explanation, I think you have got us on board because you're asking the patients to wait for half an hour, um, starting one P.M. But I think the manpower is really tight. So I think Ms. Carmen Khan's question was why there was such an arrangement? You were asking the patients to wait for two and a half hours. So now with explanation, we understand it's better. So at the time, we started preliminary registration at twelve, at eleven A.M. Because there would be a peak of civil servants' cases from start of business to eleven A.M. And starting at eleven A.M., there would be less cases than the clinic would start registering for other patients. Now, the Monafon Dental Clinic was providing services to civil servants back then. So the G.P. sessions would only begin at one thirty P.M. When there are quotas. That's the arrangement. Got it, Dr. Ronald Lamb? So G.P. sessions start at one thirty P.M. So why did you ask the patients to come at eleven A.M.? If they come at one P.M., they only need to wait for half an hour. So I wonder why? Now, there are two peaks of civil servants' cases. The first wave is right after the start of business. The second peak is after lunch. Now, lots of clerical manpower is needed to register the patients. So we need to register the G.P. session patients in between those peaks. So that's why we are designing the G.P. sessions at one thirty P.M. So that's why there are a two-hour gap. I understand why you start the G.P. sessions only at one thirty P.M. Because you said the morning session is very busy, and during lunch as well, you have to provide services to the civil servants. That's why you're asking the patients to come at one thirty A.M. So I think the arrangement is still the same. So what more manpower are you allocating to the clinic?
Actually, the major difference is that for the Monafon Dental Hospital, they do not serve civil servants anymore because there is lack of manpower. So for the Monafon Dental Clinic, in the afternoon, they only serve the elderly or the general public sessions for emergency dental service. So you may wonder, why don't we provide a service in the morning? The reason is that we have lack of dental and secretarial staff, and we have to redeploy them from the Chongguan Road Clinic. So the operation is similar to the one that we have in Saikong first. So in the morning, they have to complete the treatment of the civil servants. They have to wait until the peak is over. And then in the afternoon, the dentist and the secretarial staff can be redeployed to Monafon Dental Clinic. So that's why we maintain the service hour to start from one thirty P.M. And for the registration, we advance that by thirty minutes. Ms. Carmen Khan?
Well, Chairman, having listened to the administration's response, I think the secretary is very pragmatic. He has said that this is not a good arrangement. He has admitted that. We have to be clear about that. So therefore, we should continue to try to improve the situation, which has started from the ninth of May. Can he undertake that he will continue to review the arrangement? Because he has not been telling us that this is a good arrangement. But with experience, I think the citizens are telling us that now we have reduced from a three-step approach to a two-step approach. Now, they are not required to go back to the clinic at eleven A.M. In the past, they have to go for three times. Now, they only have to take a two-step approach, and they have to come back to the clinic in the afternoon. But still, I think we have to observe the situation because now you have about forty disc allocated. Now, you have tried to allocate them at eight P.M. the day before and asked them to come back at one P.M. in the afternoon of the same day. Is there still room for improvement for this arrangement? Because for the other ten clinics, the new arrangement will only start in July. So in a way, it is a pilot arrangement for the Monafon Dental Hospital. This is not ideal, but I hope that you will continue to review the situation. Now, for civil servants, well, I think when I look at this special program yesterday, some people have responded that it appeared that the civil servants are enjoying a priority. I hope you can clarify the situation. Is this just the arrangement for Saikong, the Monafon Hospital, at Dental Clinic? So you have to explain the situation to us and also the arrangements for the other ten dental clinics. First, will you continue to improve the situation? And second, how you're going to deal with the civil service cases?
Secretary, first, as I said at the very beginning, the citizens have a great demand for G.P. sessions. We are aware of that. And given the existing manpower constraints, we try to enhance the arrangement and do more as far as possible. We try to enhance the service, and we also try to enhance the dis-allocation arrangement. We want to go for continuous improvement. So we will continue to review the situation and see whether the service volume is adequate and also whether the dis-allocation arrangement can be better. Under the current circumstances, actually, I'm trying to take a three-step approach. First, we try to change the time for eleven A.M. registration to one P.M. formal registration so as to reduce one more, one trip for the patients to come to the clinic. And then come July, the second step, we will try to change the time for allocating this at midnight the day before to eight P.M. on the day of service. So the patients can wait until midnight and they can get the disc earlier. The first step is that we will go for an electronic appointment system online. So for the new model, we will take into account how we can put into arrangement the best practices. So this explains that under the current stringent manpower situation, we try to adopt this three-step approach to improve the service and also the arrangement for dis-allocation. For the very long term, as stated in the policy address, by twenty twenty-five, we would try to engage an NGO to provide a general public sessions service. And we want to increase the number of this to forty thousand. And that will be a twofold increase of the current twenty thousand disc. As for the service for civil servants, the government has been providing dental service for the civil servants, and this is an undertaking. So we are not giving the civil servants priority. But this is a requirement on the part of the government as an employer to provide dental service to the civil servants as employees. So I would defer to Dr. Lamb to supplement so that the public will understand about the provision of dental service for the public. Well, because we see that there is a need for G.P. sessions, that's why we have took some of the resources for civil service to serve the public. Dr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, first, for the clinic in Saikong, it is a very small dental clinic. So the number of this is only twenty-one, not forty. And as the Secretary for Health has pointed out, the, it is an undertaking for us to provide dental service for the civil servants. And for the G.P. sessions, we try to provide that despite manpower shortage. And we try to stop the civil servants' service in the Saikong Dental Clinic, but we continue with the G.P. sessions for the public. So you can see that we actually accord priority to the general public and the G.P. sessions for them. Even for emergency dental service, the civil servants also have to queue up for that. And it will be over two hours waiting time for them. On the other hand, as the secretary has said, we think that queuing, waiting, and the allocation of this are not good arrangements. They are not ideal. So that's why we try to endeavor to go for electronic allocation system within this year. Ms. Khan? Well, the secretary has mentioned about a three-step approach. So the first step is that from the ninth of May, he has changed from a three-step approach to a two-step approach. So have you allocated this at eight P.M.? No, not yet. We want to do that in early July. Because we have to have advanced notification, we will change from the pre-registration from midnight the day before to eight P.M. on the day of the service. We need to have manpower changes for that. But I think I have heard from the different quarters of the community is that no matter what time you set for the pre-registration, the citizens, especially the elderly, they will go there early. They will go there a few hours before that. Now, you allocated this at midnight, then they will come at about five P.M. At every dental clinics. If in July, you try to have pre-registration at eight P.M., then I think they may come at one P.M. So, Secretary, I hope you would understand that the pre-registration step would be very annoying for the citizens. They will have to come two times. They have to make two trips. Can you see you can change this arrangement? For the other ten dental clinics, the service starts at nine A.M. So you're worried that you have to have a pre-registration, and people will queue up for that overnight. Is it possible for you to have a pilot? For a lot of programs, we roll it out once at the same time. But can you think about whether you want to change all ten dental clinics, the arrangements for them, at one goal in July? So the preliminary registration, you haven't tested the arrangement for allocating this on the spot, right before the service hours. Can you think about that? Ms. Khan? Preliminary registration, as I have said before, has been causing the people to come and queue overnight for service, and it is a way to tackle that. Now, you are suggesting that we ask the elderly not to come for pre-registration the day before, but just go on the day of the service. We have done that before. Actually, we have the service starting at one P.M., and then they will come at four A.M. If you start at nine A.M. the service, they will come overnight. That's why we have the introduction of the pre-registration arrangement. That's why we have the pre-registration at midnight before the service so that they can have a pre-registration. But as I said, unfortunately, I want to emphasize again that if we cannot meet the demand for service, then there will be a need to have dis-allocation. And if you have to ask people to come and queue, then definitely, they will all try to come as soon as possible, and there will be a waiting time for them. We have to think about when would be the most appropriate time for waiting. Well, we don't want to see people queuing overnight. So that's why we want to move the preliminary registration to midnight. That's why we don't want to allocate this on the spot, to avoid people from queuing overnight. So that's why we now try to put in place arrangements, a better arrangement. So the preliminary registration will be changed to eight P.M. the night before. I want to emphasize again, this is not the ideal arrangement. But we just want to reduce the waiting time for the elderly. So the solution will be electronic registration. But for the long run, of course, it will be nice if people don't need to queue for that. But that will be too idealistic because the provision of medical service will never be adequate to meet demand. So I hope you would understand that we would need a lot of medical staff to provide such a service. And you have to ask for doctors to wait for patients. Then we have to have enormous medical service provision. That means for the supply side, we'll be providing too much service, and we would require a lot of medical staff for provision of that. I would like to ask Dr. Lamb or maybe Dr. Shi, can you explain to us the procedures for the dis-allocation? So midnight, they have to come for pre-registration. That's the first time they queue. The next day, they come for the disc around noon. And then they come a third time at one thirty for the service. So for pre-registration, what information would you require from the patients? And what will be required for the dis-allocation? Can you let us know the detailed procedures and arrangements? Dr. Shi, please?
Thank you, Chairman. For preliminary registration, we only have some personal information from the applicants. For the formal registration, we would have a clinical patient management system. We have to input their formal data into the computer system so that the doctor can access them. And after the treatment, the doctor can input the conditions of the patient and the treatment allocator into the same system. So we need to have a formal registration to have the accurate information of the patient. We allocate a number for the patient so that for follow-up in future, we will be able to retrieve the information from the computer system and then also the conditions about the patient and the medical history. So everything will be inputted by the doctor into the computer system. And that will be useful for future use and follow-ups. It is necessary to have such a patient information management system because in future, it will be connected to our Yee Health system. So no matter if the patient goes to a private clinic or if they go to other public medical centers, the doctors will be able to access the information about the patient from the Yee Health system. So this is a very important step of importing the patient's information into the computer system.
Dr. Hui?
My question was, when the patients came at twelve A M the day before, they need to, they needed to register preliminarily, and then they would come back at one P M and then one thirty P M. So what are those steps about? For preliminary registration, the clerk would ask for the first few digits of the patient's identity card number, and also the date of birth and means of contact. The next day, eleven A M, that's the formal registration, as I said. The patient's personal details would be confirmed. They would have to show us their identity cards. Now, a long time ago, and there were scalpers manipulating the system. So that's why we added one more step to confirm the identity of the patient, that they are indeed the holder of the disc. The personal details would be checked, and then the information would be input into the system. When they came back the third time, they would have already registered and had the disc ready. So they would be called directly into the dentist's room to receive treatment. So the first step, preliminary registration, second step, formal registration and identity check, third step, treatment. So before the ninth of May, the formal registration at eleven A M, thanks to the audit of the Audit Commission, we are aware that the eleven A M step is not an ideal arrangement. That's why, starting from the ninth of May, we have rectified that. Patients are only required to come back to register formally at one P M. We, the staff would have to register the information of twenty-one patients. For every patient, it takes around five to ten minutes to input all their data and have their identity checked. So returning for formal registration at one P M for identity check, that's the earliest time we can offer. After registration, the first patient would be able to see the dentist right after. So while the dentist is seeing the first patients, we would be registering the subsequent patients. And then the queue would be very smooth. After patient number one, two um has, are seeing the dentist, we will be registering for the subsequent patients. And all twenty-one patients would be seen by the dentist in no time. So as eleven A M, the night before, there would be the preliminary registration. So do the patients know their queuing number? Yes, they would. So at one P M, they would be following their number. So the clerks would register their details and confirm their identity. And then the patients can see the dentist at one thirty A M. Now, previously, you registered their information at eleven A M because you wanted the patients to be seen by the dentist in the shortest time possible. So for the Saikong Dental Clinic at Monafong, there are free trips. So what about the other dental clinics? So may I answer, Chairman? The Monafong Dental Clinic in Saikong is only one of the clinics providing general public sessions. It is the only dental clinic which offer GP sessions in the afternoon. The remaining eleven clinics offer dental services for the public in the morning. Now, if we distribute disc at eleven A M the night before, then the patients will have to come back at eight thirty A M the next day to register formally. And then, and then they can see the dentist. I mean, that's for the other dental clinics. So for the other eleven clinics, only two trips are required. So when they come back the next day, you have to conduct formal registration for the patients, all the same? Yes, correct. With the preliminary registration at twelve A M the night before, when they come back eight thirty A M the next day, they would be registered, and then they would see the dentist. Thank you. I was asking why the need of three trips? So you told me that at eleven A M, you would formally register the patient's detail, and then at one thirty P M, they would be able to see the doctors immediately. Oh, but that's the same case for other clinics, only two trips are required, and still you have to register the details at eight thirty A M. So why is a difference for Monafong? So we are grateful for the Audit Commission for pointing out this issue. So we have adjusted the arrangements. The Monafong Clinic would register patient's detail at one P M, and then patients can see the dentist at one thirty. So like all the other eleven clinics, there would only be two trips. One for preliminary registration, and then formal registration and the actual appointment. At present, this is the standard that we are adopting. Now for the clinic in Saikong, there were free trips, so this is still not ideal. So at the moment when the clinic decided that the arrangement should be so, I think Professor Lo and Dr. Ronald Lam were not, were not made aware of this arrangement back then. So you mean the arrangements of formal registration at eleven A M, free trips? I think Dr. Lam has explained this. I know he has, but were you aware of this arrangement? I was. So why did you allow such an arrangement? It was an arrangement made a very long time ago for the Monafong Dental Clinic. It was a small dental clinic providing services to civil servants as well. There were only two consultation rooms. And when there were not enough manpower, only one consultation room and one dentist was available, and there was only one clerical staffer to handle all the administrative work. So as I said, when the clinic was still offering services to civil servants, since there were, there was only one clerical staff in the morning, they have to focus the manpower to deal with the peaks of civil servants cases first. And only after that can the clerical staff handle the other public, uh, patients from the members of the public. So the point is you were aware of this situation. So there was only one day of GP sessions, and there was only one clerical staff handling the registration for the patients. So shouldn't you have deployed additional manpower to help that one clerical staff to speed up the registration? We are allocating some ninety billion dollars annually to the Health Bureau because we want to speed up the healthcare services. So since you know or you anticipated that there would be shortage of manpower, I think you should have redeployed additional manpower to support the clinic. So I hope you can learn from this case. If you expect or anticipate manpower shortage, you should have made advance arrangements to save the public the pain of queuing. I think most of the members would have issues with your handling of the issue. Ms. Kam and Ken, any follow-up?
I fully agree with the chairman. We have to make it as user-friendly as possible. Secretary, the secretary says you are, the government is adopting a people-centric philosophy, but the issue boils down to the adequacy of manpower, so we have to ramp up manpower. Now my next question is on distributing disc electronically, so can we speed up the launching of the platform? Professor? I invite Dr. Ronald, Dr. Ronald Lam to answer this question. We promise that the platform will be ready this year. We're not sure whether it is in July or August at this stage because we are still discussing the model of service with the contractor. Now, after all the procurement contracts are settled, we will have a clear idea, but anyway, it will be within the year. Ms. Kam and Ken, how will it help the elderly patients? There are worries that when everything is made electronic, then it would be unfair to those who are not tech savvy. Dr. Ronald Lam?
Thank you. We are also aware of the issue mentioned by Ms. Kam and Ken. In particular, most elderly people are not tech savvy. So I think the doc, um, the chairman and Ms. Kam and Ken would remember during the vaccination drive for COVID, there were a number of service points set up to help elderly people who are not familiar with, um, technology to make a booking. And there are still a lot of service points running in the community. Once we have completed developing the platform, we will offer assistance to the elderly people should they need it via these existing service points. Ms. Kam and Ken? Can you collaborate with the care teams and other forces under the H Y A B?
Now, the service points are already in operation, um, with the help of district councils and the H Y A B. So Ms. Yuna Xiong, any more questions about this part? So the administration told us they are reducing the trips for patients from three to two. We understand the intent, the intention. You want to prevent elderly people from queuing overnight, but I think the queuing time is still the same. You will need to, you will have to queue for some seven hours to get this, but we understand where you are coming from. You want to encourage the elderly people to go home and sleep. So I think it is good to set the indicator to allow the patients to see the dentist twenty, within twenty-four hours after getting a disc. So there were a lot of questions on why three steps were needed. The first time it would, it would be preliminary registration, the second time formal registration. So why don't you combine the preliminary and the formal registration into one step? You're asking the patients to come back at one P M to do the formal registration. So why don't you complete the full registration process in the first step, and then the second time they come, they can see the doctor immediately?
Dr. Lam? Thank you, Chairman. I think we have to strike a balance. Uh, we understand Ms. Yong's point. But for the, uh, complete registration, as mentioned by my colleague, that will take time and manpower. So if we try to have the full registration at the same time, then at the midnight when we start the registration, then it will take a longer time. So on balance, we consider that if they come back on the next day, they have to come back to the clinic anyway to see the dentist, then we would prefer to have the full registration a little bit before they see the dentist. So we want them to have the pre-registration quickly, and then they go back to take a rest, and then come back uh during daytime to have the full registration and see the dentist. Ms. Yong?
Well, Chairman, I think you said you would take about five minutes to do a full registration of a patient. So you have to deal with twenty-one patients. So these twenty-one patients actually have been queuing. They have been queuing for five to seven hours for the disc or for the pre-registration. So in a way, you can do that even earlier, and you don't have to wait until midday. So you can make use of the time then because the twenty-one patients are already there. So just try to allocate one staff for that. Well, maybe it has to be a night shift and you have to pay more, but then for the Department of Health, that will be very little extra expenses. And as Ms. Ken has said, can you work with the community care teams or the district council so that people would help you out with the full registration? Uh, I'm not sure whether only your staff will have authority to input information into the system. Uh, but maybe there is also a question of privacy as well. But since you're already allocating the disc, why don't you do the registration at the same time? Then you would be able to compress the time, and then the patients do not have to come back two times or three times. Well, we understand that there will be time required for queuing, and you don't want them to queue overnight. We understand that. But how can you compress the procedures so that they can wait less, for less time before they see the dentist?
Well, thank you, Ms. Yong, for your suggestion. Uh, when we try to design the system, we take into account several factors. Uh, first, uh, the information will be connected to the clinical management system. So we have to input the data of the patient into this management system, and there is the authority for inputting data. Well, at this current time, we don't have sufficient staff. We are also lacking clerical staff. So we need clerical staff to take a night shift, uh, to input the information into the management system. And during the nighttime, it is not easy to redeploy clerical staff to do so. Because once you try to input data into the clinical management system, you also need I T support staff around. So for the whole registration system, we may be requiring all the clerical and admin staff, including I T staff, uh, to be available at the dental clinic, and it is not easy. But if we were able to have such a rostered system, then we will be lacking clerical staff and I T staff during daytime. So this is a rather helpless situation. It is a really difficult decision. We have to strike a balance. Uh, we want to facilitate the elderly patients, and then also we want to ensure that the operation of the clinic at the daytime is smooth. So Chairman, members, I think you are correct. We are trying to address the problem, and we want to tackle the problem at source, and the solution will be an electronic disallocation system, and want to comply that within this year. I think technology would help. You say that if you have to input data, you need a clerical staff, and you would need also I T staff support. But if we have the computer system set up, we already have the Y health system, and we have other systems. If a patient already has a disc number, can we try to consolidate the systems so that they don't have to So that they don't have to wait for such a long time. You have to wait until you have a Y ticketing system. Can you do it right now at the moment? So you're not allocating two thousand this a day, you're only allocating twenty one this per day. So you have a specific number for each patient. Is it possible to input that into the Yi Health system? And it is possible for the patient, would it be possible to, for the patient to input the data into the Yi Health? Through the Yi Health app, then they don't have to go to a government department for approval. Or application. So why don't you make use of the system? The Yi Health and the I am Smart system. So, is it possible to do so instantly? Give the responsibility to the patient and ask the health, uh, the community care team to help them? It is just very simple questions. For example, whether you have had the operations before, uh, do you have allergy to any medication? I think you would not ask me for a lot of medical history because I'm just seeing the dentist. So would it be possible to ask for? The patients to input the information themselves. You have a night before, the whole time for them to do so. Can we make use of the I am Smart system for this purpose? Doctor Lam? Well, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Miss Yong. Uh, for the use of I T, we try to look at it holistically. And we want to develop an electronic disallocation and appointment system. And if the system is in place, we will try to see if we can connect them uh, with other systems like uh. I am Smart or Yi Health Plus. So we would try to look into that during the development of our new system. Uh, for members' information, uh, we have also reported last, at the last meeting. That we are conducting a survey uh, to collect the views of the service users. So as to enhance our service. Uh, Miss Yong has suggested that um. We are involving a lot of elderly and they may not be that tech savvy. But if we haven't collected information from the service user and we try to roll out something quickly. Then it may not be that useful for all the patients, especially uh, the elderly. Uh, they may not know how to use a new system. So we need a bit more time to develop the electronic. Appointment and disallocation system. And we don't want to roll out too many changes uh, so that the elderly or the underprivileged would find it uh. Helpless or difficult to use the system. So I hope you would understand that we did a bit of time and we want to roll out uh, the system gradually. But we will try to endeavor to do so as quickly as possible. Miss Yong? A suggestion. On the waiting time, it now lasts about five to seven hours. I think you'll have to liaise with your colleagues uh, for the Yi Health. Maybe you should set up a help desk there to teach the citizens how they can make use of the mobile phone apps. Uh, to facilitate uh, the uh. Use of the government systems because they are waiting there for five to seven hours. Can you try to arrange someone there to help them? Understand how they can use uh, mobile apps. So I think we should have the determination to. Do so. Uh, don't just roll out the app and hope that people would use it. You have to educate and help people learn how to use them. So any further questions on session part two? If not, Doctor Lam, I just want to share my views. My understanding is that the elderly people, um, they will come early anyway. They have to wait for five to seven hours before service. Starts from eight thirty A M. So you want to be more user friendly and you don't want them to queue overnight. That's why you ask them to come the day before for preliminary registration and obtain a disc. If you try to allocate a disc at midnight, then they will come around the evening and then next morning they can come for treatment. Uh, I understand your thinking. And I. Share your thinking because you want to avoid the patients to come and queue overnight. For a disc. If the clinics do not start service at eight thirty A M and if they only start service at one thirty P M. Then if the people have to queue for five to seven hours, then they will come around seven A M. Well, for the elderly people, they would get up very early during uh, the mornings. So they don't have to come and queue for two times. Because your logic is that you don't want to allocate the disc at midnight. So for the eight thirty A M cases, you want to prevent people to queue overnight for appointments. If the service only starts in the afternoon, then they don't have to come for two trips. Uh, secondly, Miss Yong. Has pointed out that they would have to come back the next day anyway. So is it possible for them to have the. Full registration then? But then you said it is not easy to redeploy staff for night shifts. If that's the case, then can you try to allocate the this earlier, say uh, five P M or four P M? Then people will also still queue for five to seven hours and they will come in the mornings. Uh, and then your colleagues are still around. Then you can do the full registration then. I think that will help ease the situation. Well, I think you have to ask colleagues to come at five P M the day before. And then they also have to come the next day at eight thirty A M and you will also need staff to help them. So for the staff arrangement, it is more or less the same. So if they have the full registration the day before, then the next day they can come just see the dentist. If not, then they have to come back the next day and do the registration and they don't see the doc, uh, the dentist instantly. So I hope you would go back and think about that. See how you can enhance the arrangements. If there are no further questions on part two, then let's move on to part three.
And I would defer to uh, Mister Edmund Wong. Thank you, Chairman. For part three, uh, my first question is on Note twenty nine. It is talking about the number of service users and you have a annual grant of about seven hundred and twenty dollars. And it is for dental health, uh, for their. Staff to promote oral health and also for the uh, family members of the patients. So I want to ask whether this is seven hundred and twenty dollars. Is just for dental treatment or that includes publicity and promotion? Doctor Lam?
Thank you, Chairman. For the seven hundred and twenty dollars, it includes everything. Doctor, uh, Mister Wong? So if I try to promote oral health. Then it may be a briefing or a seminar with about thirty, forty attendees. Is it on average, the cost is seven hundred and twenty dollars? Per time of the breathings. Doctor Lam? Uh, the cost is per service user. It is seven hundred and twenty dollars per service user. Mister Wong, you have three components. You have the provision of dental care services. You have uh. Oral healthcare planning and also uh. Promotion of the uh, oral health to the patient, the family members and the caregivers. I understand the amount may differ, but uh, if you try to divide the cost by service user. Then I think you should try to divide them into different components. There should be another cost per user for dental treatment and also the cost for. Promotion of uh, healthcare. So that should be the actual expenses per user. Would that be better?
Doctor Lam? Concerning the fee level, we have made reference to the. Services provided by the, uh, the subsidies provided by the S W D. So the service would include simple oral health assessments and also health education. For each of our service targets, including elderly patients, we would formulate dental. In, an individualized dental healthcare plan for the patient. So it includes reminding. The patient. About the importance of oral health. So with that individualized dental healthcare plan, the patients will understand this condition of their oral health. And what kind of tools they should use to keep their. Um, teeth healthy. So the seven hundred fifty dollars would include that. Service as well. Mister Edmund Wong, I think you didn't understand my question. Does it mean that the. Cost per patient would be seven hundred twenty dollars on each patient excluding um, the education on family members and caregivers and so on? May I invite Doctor Hui to answer this question?
The seven hundred twenty dollars include the cost for deploying. Outreaching staff to daycare centers while C H E is by the. Contractor under the O D C P. So that covers everything within the outreach services. It includes conducting oral assessments and check as well as scaling and polishing for the elderly residents in the R C H Es. It also includes phosphorus treatments. The seven hundred twenty dollars include the whole package. Offered by the outreach staff as the R C H Es on sites. It also includes the equipments and tools used. It also includes developing an individualized oral healthcare plan for each elderly patient. The caregivers and also the staffers as the R C H Es would be given. Education and training on maintaining the oral health of the patients. So the seven hundred twenty dollars include everything.
Mister Edmund Wong?
Got it. I think this is very important. I thought the seven hundred twenty dollars include providing, providing oral. Healthcare services to the patients as well as offering education to the caregivers and the. Family members and the costs is evenly shared by all the, all these um, service targets. So now I understand better.
Now there are. Um, the number of outreach dental teams set up by each NGO range from one to ten and the number of R C H Es served. Range from nineteen to three hundred eighty five. So it can be one to thirty eight point five R C H Es. So it seems that there is a huge difference concerning the number of R C H Es or daycare centers assigned to each outreach teams. Doctor Hui?
It depends on the. NGO's application. In their application or their proposal, they would mention the number of outreach teams they are going to deploy. For smaller organization, there may only be one outreach team. For other NGOs. Some of them even have their own dental clinics, so they can, they can afford deploying several outreach dental teams. So for those with only one team, we would assign fewer R C H Es or daycare centers to them. For those with more teams, they would get a larger area as well as more R C H Es. For some NGOs, they may be serving nineteen or more R C H Es or daycare centers. It depends on the number of dental teams they are able to deploy. And also there are some. Charity bodies who would like to serve. Their own areas. Or their own, or R C H Es under their own management. So it really depends on their wish.
Mister Edmund Wong? So can I understand? The situation like this. Say we have six charitable organizations in Hong Kong. If they have their own dental teams, uh, dental clinics and their own R C H Es or daycare centers, they would prefer. To deploy outreach dental teams to serve their own establishments. Doctor Hui? Mister Edmund Wong is right. Thank you. Another question on table fourteen, achievements on target number of service users. Now according to the reports, NGO G and I performed relatively poorly. Some reasons were mentioned, so I will come back to that later. So let me look at NGO F first. During the epidemic, of course, the. Would be more difficult for the organization to achieve as a target. For other organizations, I think they are performing, they were performing relatively well. However, for F. In two thousand seventeen to nineteen, uh, the perform, the achievement was one hundred eighty percent. And then one hundred sixty six percent, one hundred twenty seven percent, one hundred forty one percent, one hundred sixty six percent and in the most recent year, two hundred and thirteen percent. It's. Its performance exceeded other NGOs by much. So what explains the exceptional performance of this NGO? Because this is really eye catching. So when the other all NGOs are achieving targets um, to the ratio of um, nine, ninety to a hundred. And twenty percent, why was NGO F able to? Outachieve others so much? Doctor Lam?
Now there are several possibilities. First of all, the NGO is a. Ginormous organization and under its wing, there are already. A large number of R C H Es and elderly care facilities. Some other NGOs failed to achieve the targets because that was the epidemic time. Many R C H Es were closed and their residents sent to quarantine centers. So maybe um, the. Epidemic control efforts of that NGO was up to standard. That's why. Fewer of the R C H Es were closed and that's why they outperformed others.
Mister Edmund Wong? Paragraph three, three point nine. NGO G and I's. Underwhelming performances. Now has the Departments of Health follow up on the performance standard of NGO's G and I and are these two NGOs still on your? Service list? Director, now NGO G underperformed because it is one of the smallest organization. It serves three districts. Kaolin City, Shangshibo and Yaochimong. It is of a small operation scale. During the epidemic, the R C H Es under the management of. Or served by the NGO was affected. Many of its members. In the dental care teams fell ill, so that affected the performance of NGO G. For NGO I, for similar reasons. NGO I was affected significantly during the epidemic. For a considerable period of time, the entire. Outreach dental team under NGO I could not operate. Now NGO I was of a larger scale compared with NGO G. So by the end of last year. They were able to catch up with the others. Now they are able to achieve forty four percent of the target. They were not. fully delivering yet, but they are catching up. We understand that plight. On principle, despite the small size of some NGOs, we still want to include them on the list. Because we would like it, we would like, because we would like to provide diversity of service to the L C H Es and the daycare centers. So during the epidemic, we exercised discretion to keep them on the list. Mister Hammond Wong? So Doctor Lam mentioned why some NGOs are still on the list despite the underwhelming performance. Okay, so um thirty-nine, three point ten C and D. Now you ask the NGOs to give you um an estimated cost so that you can prepare a budget for them, so there is not a not a ceiling. Now, three point one zero C. For NGOs which could not achieve fifty percent of the proposed target number of service users, they will need to re they will need to refund any overpaid amount. So is that still seven hundred twenty dollars for each user? Or is it the case that if they fail to achieve fifty percent of the targets, they have to refund everything? So is that a calculated on per head basis? Doctor Lam? If the NGO fails to achieve fifty percent of the service users target number, then they will have to refund the entirety of the subsidies given. Mister Wong? So can I interpret it like this? Besides NGOs G and I, they have to fully refund the subsidies given to them. For the other NGOs, they would receive subsidies on a level of seven hundred twenty dollars per service user. Doctor Lam? True, the level of subsidies is based on the number of service users. So what do you mean by fifty percent target achievement? May I invite Doctor Hui to respond to this question?
Now for each applicant, when they submitted their proposal, they need to give us an estimated cost or budget. So the first batch of disbursements would be fifty percent of that budget. The disbursements of the remaining fifty percent depends on the achievements of service targets and also the number of elderly patients served. And then we would disburse the additional amount. Now if the NGO fails to achieve the fifty percent target, so they would have to refund the overpaid amounts of the funding we gave them, which was fifty percent of their budget. So the basis is the same. It would be calculated on the number of patients served. We would check, we would check the record and disburse payments in accordance with the head counts. So for the overpaid amounts, we would take it back.
Mister Wong? Now I understand. I thought you would give them fifty percent of the budget, no matter what. If they achieved the target, they would get the remaining sum and seven hundred twenty dollars for any additional patient served. Now I understand that this is just an upfront payment you are giving them. Another question, table fifteen. Now the particip- participation rates of L C H Es or daycare or daycare centers in the O D C P is low. On average, it is eighty percent. So what is the reason why the participation rate is so low? It is a free of charge service. So I would like to know why.
Doctor Lam? Thank you, Chairman. The question actually depends on the size of the residential care home for the elderly. It depends on also the number of outreach teams that the NGO can provide. We also have a requirement. If the participation rate is not satisfactory, then the number of L C H Es allocated cannot be served or they refuse to participate in the scheme. Then we will require the NGO to let us know the reasons for nonparticipation of the L C H Es or D E's. And we noticed that oftentimes, the reasons for not participation is that uh they do not have sufficient manpower. The residential care homes do not have sufficient manpower or they may have physical constraints. For the outreach teams, when they arrive to L C H Es and provide service, the L C H E has to provide staff to support them, to take care of the elderly. So these are reasons of constraints for the L C H E's willingness to participate in the scheme. Well, now I understand. So apart from the NGOs, the L C H E also has to provide support in order to get the service, so they may will be unwilling to join. Well, seven hundred twenty-two dollars is not a big sum for each user. But is it possible for the NGOs to also provide staff to release um the staff requirement of the L C H Es when they conduct the outreach service? At present, there is an outreach team going to the L C H Es. Depending on the circumstances, if the outreach team find that the situation is not ideal and it is better for the patients to go to their dental clinic or other venues, then we will provide them with a subsidy. So there will be a transport subsidy and also an escort service subsidy. And we hope that these measures would entice the L C H Es to join this scheme. So there will be resources for them to arrange for extra staff. Mister Wong?
Well, I think I also have questions on paragraph three point twenty-seven and three point twenty-eight. Uh there are measures to encourage the NGOs to participate in the O D C P. The government hope that there will be sixty to twenty NGOs joining, but then only about ten to eleven NGOs supported, uh submitted proposals. So I think the cost for polishing and scaling is more than seven hundred twenty dollars. So the subsidy is not a big sum. So the last question for the department, looking forward for the seven hundred and twenty dollars grant, uh you have made reference to the ceilings set by S V D under the C S S A. Uh but because it is not very popular popular now and it is not easy to find NGOs to join this scheme and provide service, what measures will you take to address the situation? Mister Lam, Doctor Lam? Uh Chairman, actually, there are a lot of considerations before an NGO decides whether to join the scheme. I think now the bottleneck is a short of manpower. Uh the lack of manpower of dental staff is not just happening to the public uh healthcare sector, but for the NGOs, they also face similar manpower shortage problem. So they may not have sufficient manpower to form an outreach team because we require a dentist and then also uh dental assistants in order to form one team. So it is not easy for them to come up with an outreach team. Uh they may have to recruit staff for their own purpose and then also recruit extra staff for the outreach team. So this is one of the big constraints. Mister Wong? I appreciate that manpower shortage is a problem. I think for the last hour, a lot of questions raised my members concerning the Saikong Dental uh clinic reviews that there is only one that is serving there. I know it is not easy to address manpower shortage. Now you only have a grant of seven hundred two dollars per patient. So what other measures can you take to help the NGOs? You hope that you would have sixteen to twenty NGOs participating in the scheme, but now you only have about ten to eleven joining. So it is only about half of the NGOs unwilling to join your scheme. So how can we enhance the service under such a situation? So what more can the government or the department do to entice the NGOs to come forward and join the scheme? Well, I think the department is not working on our own. Uh we have a support from other departments like the social welfare departments. Uh we have taken several measures. Uh first, we collaborate with the S V D. We have established a mechanism. So every year, when there is a training program for the L C H Es, then we would include programs or elements for introducing the scheme to the operators of L C H Es. And we take the opportunity uh to provide information on oral health care. And so these are channels to entice them to come forward and participate in the scheme. Now for the code of practice of the L C H Es, uh the S V D also have uh documents for inviting tender and they have put in requirements for the L C H Es um to provide oral health care checkups for their elderly residents there. So these are also incentives for the L C H Es to join. So actually, the L C H E can decide, uh they can collaborate with other NGOs and arrange for dentists uh to come help their residents and conduct oral health checks for them. With these requirements and with the platform I just mentioned, uh there is opportunity for properizing uh the scheme. And we hope that the NGOs would come forward and join the scheme. Thirdly, uh we are also being more proactive these days. Well, for the NGOs, uh we actually have a new participant for the new NGO joining. As an example, we have allocated a number of L C H Es to this particular NGO so that they can approach them and arrange for outreach service. Well, quite a number of L C H Es turned down the request. So now we don't just work through the NGOs to find out the reasons why the L C H Es don't want to join. We actually took the initiative to approach the L C H E directly to ask them, why don't they want to join the scheme? And then we liaise with the relevant departments uh to render assistance. Well, some of them uh tell us that they don't want to join the scheme for uh other reasons. And we try to collaborate with different departments and we try to approach the L C H Es direct so as to understand the reasons for not joining and also to encourage them to join. Mister Wong? I have no further questions on this part, Chairman.
Miss Coming Ken? Thank you, Chairman. For part three, we are talking about an outreach dental care support for the elderly. I noticed that this is a very good scheme uh because the elderly are frail, they stay in the L C H Es or the daycare centers. So the policy is outreach, so you are delivering the service to them on the spot. And first, you just start with oral examination, scaling and polishing, but now you cover also fillings, extractions and dentures. For twenty-two to twenty-three, you have some thirty-nine thousand service users and the expenditure is about forty-nine billion dollars. So this is a very good service with good intention. And I think it is good value for money. So I would really like to help the administration to enhance this scheme. For the F S A, can you provide us with a sample? Uh because I understand that you regularize the scheme since twenty fourteen. So have you noticed uh new issues to be addressed? And I noticed that uh with the effect from April uh twenty twenty-four, you have another new F S A. The F S A runs for a three-year period every time. So have you updated the F S As? And also the system for allocating the L C H Es to the NGOs? Mister Wong has asked about the questions on the uh disbursement of the grants. Uh I would also like to understand about the allocation of L C H Es. So one question is that NGOs are not participating very high. The participation rate is not high because there are eligible NGOs, twenty-seven of them, but then only about fourteen of them made a proposal, a submission, and then in the end, only about ten to eleven actually joined the scheme. So we have looked at the NGOs uh which are not performing well. Have they continued to provide a service? Uh Doctor Lam? Uh I will first talk about the allocation system. So we tried to divide all the L C H Es and the D E's. Uh in Hong Kong, we compiled a list uh to the NGOs who are interested in joining the program. And we provide to them the list on a district basis. Also, we look at the size of the NGOs. Uh some may be a big charity organization, then we will try to provide more L C H Es for them because they have more outreach teams. So the allocation of L C H E depends on the size of the NGOs and also the district where the NGO is located. Uh then the NGO will try to approach the L C H Es on the list to see whether they are interested to join the program. For the F S As, after the regularization of the scheme, we have been using the same funding and service agreement, F S A. Uh we have not revised it yet. Actually, for the last uh triennial year, nineteen year, twenty nineteen to twenty, we had tried to introduce some enhancement, but unfortunately, uh there's the uh COVID pandemic outbreak then. So we have sort of suspended the work. Uh now we have introduced a change. This is not a technical change regarding the F S A. Uh for the grant for the service user, now we give an amount of uh seven twenty dollars. Now we change it to seven ninety because of inflation and other factors, but the other items remains more or less the same. Miss Coming Ken? Uh next question. I think actually supports my view that the F S A has not been updated in accordance with time. The audit report has actually used two periods from July to twenty seventeen to March twenty twenty-one and then also another period from twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. We, they have conducted um some investigation. So for the renewal in twenty twenty-four April, we used the old F S A. Now the allocation system as explained by the administration is that it is not led by demand, but led by the NGO. So you depend on which NGO comes in, where the NGO is located, which district it will serve. So you are not trying to divide the L C H Es and D E's on a district basis. So you are not uh demand led. You now only allocate the L C H Es to the NGO. So that's why for some NGOs, they are serving some three hundred eighty-five L C H Es. Uh which paragraph are you referring to, Miss Coming Ken? I'm on page thirty-two. And the note there. So now for the NGOs, they have ten NGOs and twenty-three outreach teams. For one NGO, they have ten old outreach teams. But the NGOs allocated to them ranges from nineteen to three hundred and eighty-five. So it So it all depends on how big the NGO is, then you allocate more RCHEs to them. So this is not a very good arrangement. So actually, the provision of service is all deferred to the NGO. So I'm now referring to note thirty on page thirty-nine. So I want you to be more proactive. Why don't you try to understand the demand that you are facing? For example, how many RCHEs and DEs require such service? And then you allocate them to the NGOs. Would that be a better arrangement? That will be demand-led. Now there is a lot of mismatches. If we look at the table fourteen, you can see that the achievement of targets. G NGO has a very low achievement rate. Uh, it is, uh, from, for twenty-two, twenty-three is twenty percent. And then for NGO I, it also has a very low achievement rate for twenty-twenty-one. It only has a rate of point one percent. And then it is gradually getting better. So by twenty-three, twenty-two, it already reached thirty-two percent. So for the renewal of service of, uh, NGOs G and I, have they been renewed?
Director. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Carmen Ken. First of all, the target is to have all the RCHEs and daycare centers in the eighteen districts participate, participating in the scheme. However, there are constraints. There are shortage of manpower. And not every NGO has their own dental services. Uh, there are twenty-eight such NGOs with their own dental clinics. Among them, eleven are participators. For the, um, are participants, for the remaining eleven, we are still trying to understand why they are not joining. Besides manpower shortage, are there any other reasons behind the non-participation? So we are going to conduct a survey on why these NGOs are, have opted out. A policy is the participating NGOs can select the areas or districts they prefer to work in. So on one hand, we will know the preference of the NGOs in terms of the districts they would like to serve and the number of teams they have. And then we would match the RCHEs and daycare centers to them depending on their operational scale. Now, the important thing is only the NGO themselves know the number of dentists they have and the number of staffers available for outreach in work. So we can't set the targets for them. We need to reserve some flexibility for the NGOs to set the targets depending on their availability of manpower and the districts they are serving. The third issue. We definitely agree with the recommendation made by the Audit Commission to improve our funding and services agreements. We need to add an assessment item of past performance. During the epidemic, NGOs G and I underperformed. But we are not going to make drastic changes to the FSAs. Or rather, we haven't. There are two reasons. First, those NGOs providing dental services, there are not many of them. We only have twenty-eight of such NGOs and only eleven of them join the ODCP. We would like to have as many NGOs join as, joining as possible because with more service providers, more elderly people can be benefited. That's why we allow them to join on a more lenient basis. Taking NGOs G and I as examples, there were some late submission of reports. Now all the reports are here, so we know the statistics. For year two thousand twenty-three to four, the achievement rates were eighty-six percent and forty-four percent for the two NGOs. True, they only achieved sixty percent and forty percent of the achievements target. However, a total of one thousand five hundred elderly patients were served. I think that is a very good number. At least a thousand elderly patients benefited from their services despite their failure to achieve the targets fully. So on that basis, we allow them to remain on the list. But we agree that with the easing of the impact caused by the epidemic, we are going to conduct another round of review on their performance. But the point is, as long as an NGO can provide service to the elderly patients, we would allow them to join. Ms. Carmen Ken? So judging by this report, we don't have doubts on the government's will to provide quality dental services to elderly people, but we doubt whether these NGOs have the capacity to do that. So you are saying that NGO G and I will be awarded the contracts. Now, if you look at paragraph three point one to C, you are assigning a district to the NGOs. So the NGOs would, um, seek, seek out and potential service users on their own. So according to paragraphs, uh, three point one to C, among the thirty-nine RCHEs or DEs assigned to NGO G, none of them joined. So this is Shamsripo district we are talking about. None of the RCHEs or DEs accepted NGO G's offer of service. Is it because of the poor standard of service? I think you have to adopt a demand-led approach. Maybe there is simply a lack of incentives for NGOs to join the ODCP. That's why out of the twenty-eight NGOs capable, only eleven joined. As a result, you are accepting anyone who apply. So can you respond to my observation? Director. Thank you, Chairman. Some supplementary information. Among the twenty-eight NGOs, only eleven joined the ODCP. We are conducting a survey on why the remaining seventeen opted out. And we don't have the full results yet, but four have reached back to us. According to them, it was because of financial difficulties and shortage of dentists. That's why they opted out. At the moment, they are already struggling to provide services. So that's why they are reluctant to invest additional resources on outreach services. We understand Ms. Carmen Ken's concern. Now, how about, how about we take this perspective? This audit spans across three financial years, including the years with epidemic. A lot of organizations were affected by the epidemic. And many of them were virtually, have virtually suspended their operation, including NGO G. So we did offer the NGOs on the list with some discretion. After all, under the epidemic, under the, under COVID, many RCHEs were closed or they simply rejected NGOs to provide service on site. Since we have returned normalcy, if the NGOs are still willing to provide service and if they have sufficient manpower, we will allow them to join. Now for NGO G before the epidemic, it wasn't able to reach the target fully, but, um, at least it completed half of its target. So after the epidemic, NGOs G and I were able to catch up and offer service to one thousand five hundred elderly patients. That's not a very good figure, but still, it's something. So in the upcoming contract, contractual term without the impact caused by the epidemic, we hope the two NGOs would perform better. But we would accept the Audit Commission's recommendation to include a clause on past performance. Ms. Carmen Ken? Chairman, it seems that we are going nowhere. Now, with this distributary system, it is not demand-led, it is NGO-led. You assign the NGO with a district, say Shamsripo for NGO G, and you leave it to them to find the users. As a result, none of the RCHEs joined. If you look at table fifteen for NGO G, the participation rate is still nine percent. Now for training, the achievement percentage is zero for consecutive years. Why does NGO G still gets the, uh, the contract? It is because the mechanism stays the same. I think if you, if you move away from the demand-led approach, other NGOs will be willing to bid for the tender. At present, you are asking the NGOs to reach out to the community and back the RCHEs to let them help them. It is not attractive. Now, what about the, sorry, which paragraph, Ms. Carmen Ken? Paragraph three point three one. Actually, the target, uh, one thousand or two thousand is mentioned. Table fourteen. It's not. Now, this is about the number of service users assigned to the outreach teams, one thousand or tw- or two thousand. Why is that? And you said, um, the overall achievement on target is, uh, forty-three thousand service users. But that's the total number. The achievement is not the same for all the NGOs. Some do better and some do worse. So, but is that the case, that the total number of service users reached forty-three thousand for all NGOs? Now, you said that the coverage of the ODCP is sixty-five percent of the eligible, of the total number of eligible elderly people, so compared to two thousand seventeen. I think we have more elderly people now uh, back then, because during the epidemic, um, unfortunately, some elderly people passed away. So back then, when the number was higher, was the achievement rate as high as sixty percent? Dr. Lam? Thank you, Ms. Carmen Ken. Concerning the table you mentioned, table sixteen. Percentage of participating RCHEs provided with training activities. Now, there is, um, there are zero percent, um, the percentage is zero for NGO G. And that's because of the late submission of the audit report. Now, again, NGO G is a smaller organization, and it, it was badly impacted by the epidemic. There were closure of RCHS analysis management during the epidemic. So after submitting the audit reports, we found that it did offer some training activities to the RCHS and DEs. It has submitted the reports now, so the percentage is not zero, but still, it failed to meet the target. Between two thousand twenty and two thousand and twenty-three, these years were badly affected by the epidemic plus the gathering ban and distancing measures. It was impossible to conduct large-scale oral health training activities in the RCHS, so we understand that.
Actually, after two thousand twenty-two, we are moving towards normalcy. For twenty-three, twenty-four, um, for the several NGOs, um, their participation rate is still on the low side. Dr. Lam? As I said, so the two thousand twenty-three, all the get ban on social gathering has been lifted. So after the lifting of the ban, it is not possible for them to rebound to the pre-pandemic situation. I think we have to allow them some more time. But that explains that the rate should not be zero. Uh, but then during the audit examination, so this NGO has not supported, submitted the reports then because of the COVID situation. That's why the figure has, is, uh, zero. But we do admit that the situation is not ideal and NGO G has not achieved the target. Well, since they cannot provide the, uh, service on site, uh, we have changed the arrangement. And we allow these, uh, several NGOs to use, uh, telephone to connect with the RCHS. For dental service, I think the most effective oral training is to devise an individualized oral care plan that will be better to meet the needs of the elderly and let them know what they should take care, take notice of. So for the information that we gathered, they were able to do so, to provide personalized oral health care plans, but they were not able to provide training or briefings on site. For the overall achievement target, uh, the target of thirty-three thousand service users have been met. Uh, when we wrote out the program, we want to set a target, and we have set a target of thirty-three thousand, uh, for the purpose of funding allocation and also for estimation purpose. So for every NGO, not all of them have achieved the target individually. But after the financial year, the aggregate total of the participation rates achieved the target. Sorry, I have taken up quite some time. I think the more questions I ask, the more I understand about the situation. For some districts, we noticed that the elderly have not benefited from the service because of your current arrangement. Uh, you now told us that the aggregate total, the target of thirty-three thousand service users have been achieved, achieved. But individually, not all the elderly of every district can benefit from them because they may be in a district where the contract was allocated to a small-scale NGO, then they will not be able to benefit from the outreach service. So this is not ideal. So I would like to know the administration's response. I have questions on, uh, the funding allocation. You allocated them about thirty thousand, fifty percent of the allocation. Uh, if they achieve the target, then you give them more. But if they do not function well and if they go bankrupt, how are you going to claw back the funds that you've allocated to them? Uh, Dr. Lam, can you take the question on funding allocation? And then the secretary will take the other questions. I would let Dr. He supplement, but, uh, very briefly. If the NGO cannot achieve the target of fifty percent, then we will ask them to refund the funding we've allocated. I know you will ask for a refund, but for NGO G, it has not achieved a target of fifty percent over the years, but still, you give them upfront the fifty percent of the spending. What if they go bankrupt? These are public funds. How are you going to get back the money from them? Uh, yes, I understand. For the FSA. For the FSA, we have a period of three years. So during the three-year period of the FSA, if we do not give them an upfront expenditure of fifty percent, it will be very difficult for the NGO. They have to gather manpower resources to provide the service is difficult for them. So we think that the fifty percent upfront payment is necessary for the NGO to operate. If they cannot achieve the target, then we will ask for refund of the surplus and overpayment. But if you go for the extreme scenario where the NGO goes bankrupt, uh then I think we can only try to get hold of the money through the existing legal procedures under bankruptcy.
Uh, Dr. Lam? You said it's a three-year FSA and you give them an upfront payment of fifty percent per provision of the service. So are you giving them the funding year by year annually or you're giving it to them triannually? Dr. He?
Well, Chairman, maybe I'll explain a bit on the mechanism. According to the FSA, at the beginning of the provision of service for that financial year, we will give the first phase payment. That will be fifty percent of the expenditure. For example, for NGO G, it is a very small NGO. It only has one outreach team. So their target service user is one thousand. So for the first installment, we will give them the grant under the old rate is seven hundred and twenty dollars. So we will give them the funding for five hundred participants. So that will be a first installment for them to recruit dentists and get hold of the necessary equipment. Because for every outreach team, we need one dentist and one dental surgery system. So for the bigger NGOs, they may have more than one outreach team. So for every team, they have to serve two thousand users. So after the first installment of payment, then they will commence service. After six months, we will review the service provision. If they have served more than fifty percent of the target users, then we will provide um the extra funding according to the number of users. Then we will also have the third installment and the fourth installment. Uh, for the third installment, it will be uh the same, that will be about nine months after the commencement of service. So if there are more than five hundred service users, then we will also give them funding for the extra users served. The fourth installment is after the first year, then we will try to set out of the situation. If they serve more than five hundred users, then the extra funding has already been provided by them. If they serve less than five hundred users, then we will claw back the money. So as in the case of NGO G, we actually has clawed back one of the the payment from them.
Ms. Carmen Khan? Chairman, I don't think we have taken into account the performance of the individual NGOs and then adjust the FSA accordingly. You noticed that there is a problem, but you still use the same way to deal with them. So would the secretary please record this in a minute? You use a thirty percent benchmark for every NGO, so there is a chance that some of them may not be able to catch up. So if it goes bankrupt, are you going to call back the money for the past several years involved? So for NGO G and NGO I, their achievement rate is less than fifty percent for each of the financial years. Have you asked back for asked them to refund the money? Yes, we have already done so. We hope the government will review the situation. Secretary?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Ken. Uh, sorry, Secretary. Uh, the meeting is originally scheduled to end by ten thirty AM. Is it possible for the secretary and officials to stay with us? Can we extend the meeting by eleven AM? I'm sorry, I have another meeting which is scheduled at eleven AM. Uh, we have a meeting at ten forty-five.
We have another panel meeting. Okay, let's finish this round and then call off the meeting. Chairman, Ms. Ken? I understand that you are all concerned about the outreach dental service for the elderly. I personally have visited the residential care homes for the elderly and the provision of service. I think this is a very important and good service for the elderly residing there because we deliver the service to them on the spot and they don't have to go to dental clinics. I just want to emphasize two points. For the audit report, it covers a very difficult period for us. It is from two thousand seventeen to the end of two thousand twenty-three, as the director has pointed out. From two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, March then, during that period, we have the RCHs affected by the COVID epidemic. So the service users have been affected by COVID. So if it is said that for over three consecutive years, some NGOs are not able to achieve the target. Actually, the main reason is COVID and it actually covers the three-year period that I have just talked about. So during the COVID situation, actually, a lot of the services providers cannot achieve their targets, especially for dental service. It is a very high-risk procedure against the backdrop of COVID. So when you look at the figures, I hope that you would understand that for these three particular years, what was happening then? The NGOs were facing great difficulties then. RCHs similarly are facing difficulties all because of COVID. So I hope you would appreciate that the audit report actually covers a period which is very difficult for Hong Kong. And I hope you would appreciate that for dental service, it is in great demand and it is inadequate. We don't have sufficient dentists and most of them practice in the private sector. For the NGOs, they also have difficulty, just like the government, in recruiting dentists. They also face manpower issues because they use a remuneration package, uh which is different from that of the private sector. When we look at NGO G, we understand that it has manpower shortage problems. And if you look at the figures, you can see that for the three years affected by COVID, uh the figures dropped, but then by twenty-three, twenty-four, they have more or less uh catch up. And I hope you would appreciate that for the year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, it starts from April twenty-three to December twenty-four. So it is only nine months. It is not a full year. So when they move back to normalcy, they are all having different paces. So we hope that we can help them so that they can go back to the pre-COVID situation. Uh, but the manpower shortage and the impact of COVID not just affect the government public service, but also the service by the NGOs. Uh, thank you, Secretary. I think we have to finish the meeting by ten thirty. Uh, Ms. Carmen Khan, do you have any further questions?
Chairman, I don't think the administration has responded to my question on the review of the strategy. According to the audit's recommendations, the administration has given a written response. It says that they will try to help the NGOs that are not performing so well. I hope you should use an NGO-led approach uh to understand why the NGOs don't participate in the scheme. I hope you should be more proactive and do so. Can you do that?
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Three members are still waiting to speak. Mr. Louis Long, Ms. Yuenis Yong, and Mr. Michael Look. They have questions about part three. So I will conclude, I will adjourn the meeting here. The next meeting will be held on the seventeenth of May, Friday, nine AM. That will be the third session of public hearing. So I thank the government's officials and also um the Audit Commission for attending today's meeting.